Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glanville is absent. Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ben Arnold, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to remove the resolution opposing North Carolina Senate Bills 493, 495, 497, 499, 688, and 765 from the consent agenda and add it as a first item under new business and to add the consideration of approval of GPS lease arrangements for carts at the Jamestown Park and Golf Course as the last item under new business.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change? I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Katie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Robert Frederick, 500 Windwood Drive. I have to start by commending the council for making it through an eight-hour and 25-minute budget retreat on March 20th. As the minutes from the meeting show now prove, the meeting started at 10:00 a.m. and concluded at 6:25 p.m. I imagine budgeting would be easier if y'all had Jamestown's annual comprehensive financial report. Every other municipality in Gulfport County had theirs done many months ago, as required by state law. But Jamestown's is again late. How are we, the public, to assess your ability as our representatives in budgeting and spending our tax dollars without that report? Eight hours and 25 minutes, though, that's a lot. I would have expected more than two pages of notes for an over-eight-hour meeting, but some hefty considerations were summarized very succinctly. Among them, a county-level miscalculation on the motor vehicle tax, so the fire department will be asking for a tax increase so that we pay to correct for that mistake. Is that right? Also, I saw the sheriff's department contract generated some discussion about how to save costs, but I didn't see any decisions. So I guess y'all will be thinking about that some more later. I saw the planning department wants to hire a technician for $80,000 because the minutes state one person in the department alone cannot meet council's expectations. To me, that suggests council's expectations are too high. Or are requiring actions too quickly? The Public Services Department also wants to add more positions, a public services technician due to growth, and a fleet maintenance position. I see trucks driving around and three mostly unused SUVs sitting in the parking lot. Maybe sell off some of those SUVs to reduce the fleet? Also, the town's population is pretty unchanged, so where's the growth requiring the addition of a whole new public services technician? Saw also that the Parks and Recreation Department wants to add two part-time positions for events, add a groundskeeper, also add a part-time groundskeeper, add a full-time pro shop person. With some equipment cost altogether, that's a quarter of a million dollars in additional expenses just for the golf group with $70,000 in savings to bring the reservation software in-house. Does Jamestown have an in-house software developer, too? How many people work for Jamestown? How many part- and full-time positions? Do you know an accurate number? How does it compare with other municipalities of our size and with the golf course? If so, please make it public along with an organizational chart. There's so much more to say, so many more questions to ask, and not just about the budget, but I'm running out of time. So I'll end by asking a couple more questions about the recent donation of rubberized mulch, apparently by Lowe's Home Improvement. Do any of you know why the large retailer gave away about $76,000 in rubberized mulch? It's a couple of years old. Is that why? Also, do any of you know about the environmental concern?
Please take your seat, Mr. Frederick. You are out of order.
... made from recycled tires. Thank you for your consideration.
Nobody else signed up?
Thank you.
I would like to note that Mr. Frederick has never been to one of our council budget meetings. We have one of those coming up on April 24th. I'd like to make sure that I thank Faith for her hard work on the budget. She's been doing quite a bit of work on that. We will have our next budget meeting, April 24th, at 10:00 a.m. here in this room. The town has been fortunate to receive grant funding for several major projects, and I would like to update you on those. The ARPA sidewalk project currently underway. Smaller sidewalk projects have mostly been completed. There's a couple of touch-up things that do need to be done, and Paul is working with our contractors to make sure that that is handled. The East Main Street to Millis Road sidewalk project is currently under design, and we are expecting that to be bid out very soon. The newly updated golf course website should be live this month. Some final changes are being made to the site, representing significant progress towards that outcome in the council strategic plan. I did want to make sure that I thanked Elizabeth Greason, who continues to coordinate our litter sweep events annually. They have been instrumental in keeping Jamestown clean, and we really appreciate all the volunteers that have come out to help with that event. I'd like to thank our contractor, Dillon and Griffith, for their hard work at the golf course to repair the dam at number eight and nine, which was repaired initially. I told the council it would take about a month to complete. They got it done in just over a week. That's an incredible feat, and they did that with minimal impact to the neighbors and our golfers as well. The playground and other projects at the Jamestown Park are coming along quickly, and if you drive along East Fork Road, you'll see that the shades have gone up around the playground equipment, and park staff have been working hard to get those improvements completed so that citizens can take advantage of that during the warmer months. If you haven't been to the golf course recently, I would ask that you come out and take a look at it. It's in excellent condition. Justin May and his crew have done a phenomenal job. Marcy has the pro shop stocked, we're ready for the golfing season. And I did want to shout out a special thanks to Andy on our golf maintenance crew, who has the area near the pro shop in tip-top shape. It's never looked better. Town offices will be closed on Friday, April 18th, in observance of the Easter holiday, that's Good Friday. There will not be any changes to our solar waste schedule. I did put at each of your seats a welcome-to-town flyer worksheet. Deborah has been working on that. We're going to give that to our new residents when they sign up for water, and it gives a lot of information. I also put some at the back so that you can pick those up and take a look at those. Really good information for people who are just moving into town. And I wanted to note also that under the key dates, May the 20th, council meeting has been moved to May the 27th.
Right.
So that's a typo on my... That's my fault. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions, Matthew?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ben, would you give us the high school report, please?
So we are in our final quarter for this year, and graduation's only about like 40 days away, if I'm not mistaken. So, almost there. Our Winden Ensemble recently got all superiors at their music festival, which is very, very Our new mariachi band had its first performance at Grand River recently, and prom has been announced, and we will be having that May 17th. And there will be a spring soiree hosted by our Air Force ROTC on April 26th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any committee reports?
Yep.
I do, you do.
You wanted to go first. Okay, so the planning board did meet last night regarding rezoning request located at 5125 at Water Drive west of Pine Tuck Road, consisting of 18.2 acres, and that request is from AG Agricultural to conditioning zoning for a single-family residential, approximately 73 homes. The applicant is true homes. Motion was passed for rezoning for consistency according to consistency statement and adoption of our town comprehensive plan, and will move to council. Jose also last night did a great job in reviewing the Senate bills that we've just talked about. So he did that also. Sarah's not here, but I wanted to also let everyone know that she and I actually visited Millis Road Elementary on April 3rd, and we did a presentation with the fourth and fifth grade young ladies. They have a group called Leading Ladies. And so, we did a presentation, and we played like word charades and put out some words and, you know, they kind of acted them out. Was really successful. They wanted to... They want to come back, and they want us to come back, and they also asked us to come to a council meeting, so that was really good. So that's all I have to report.
Right, great. Thank you.
Well, we did have a TAC meeting on March 25th, and the committee did review the draft of the 2026-2035 State Transportation Improvement Program, which they call STEP, DOT Lowe's acronyms. We had to approve an UPWAP, which is their Unified Work Program, so everything has an acronym. Anyway, but many of the projects that have currently been on the STEP have been impacted by substantial changes in the amount of cost estimate increases, like we have experienced too. And actually, some of the projects have fallen off of the draft step. However, and I made sure, to date anyway, the projects that Jamestown has listed have not, mainly being Oakdale Road Sidewalk, West Main and Penny Road Sidewalks, and the East Main Street Sidewalk. So it's anticipated that this draft will go to the NC DOT Board of Transportation in June with adoption by the Board of Transportation in July. So we'll know, hopefully. It will remain in good standing. Then we did have a park board meeting on April 9th, which, of course, there's this, like I say, it's regional things that aren't specific to Jamestown. But we did have a presentation by City of Greensboro on a planning project they're working on called G Borough 2045. And it's basically an expansion of public transportation system in cooperate all across the region, Greensboro, High Point, Winston-Salem, Guilford County. So I'm sure we'll hear more on that as they're... I think their next step is to go to Guilford County. Although, one of the things they had talked about to fund some of these things was to have on the ballot increase in sales tax, which I told them, good luck with that. The schools, you know, have tried to do that for about six years now. And I guess I would say just a little further, I went to the town hall budget meeting at the elementary school that the county commissioners held recently, and I did speak about the fire department and the accounting area or era that Guilford County had, or it's a difference in formulas, is what it's been told, but spoke to the Guilford County Commissioners how we really need them to find some way to help with this shortfall they're experiencing.
Thank you. Did you have any?
Yes, the Parks and Recreation Committee met. I guess we were all busy this month. The Parks and Recreation Committee met last week, and the group elected Phyllis Bridges as chair and Lamar Lee as vice chair. There was a discussion of the golfie increase, and they recommended that we do that. We'll be talking about that later. And then Scott gave us, and Marcy and several others, gave us updates on Jamestown Park.
Thank you. I'll have a PTRC meeting tomorrow, so I'll report back on that in the May meeting. Captain Howe, would you like to give us the Guilford County Sheriff's Department report?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I'm Captain Howe. So from now on, we're going to present you guys with just a little short briefing of our stats and things like that. If you have any questions, you feel free to ask. I also wanted to bring the Jamestown cars here, who are going to be... You probably have seen their faces before already, but we have Deputy Reyes, so she'll be coming to the meetings presenting. You have Deputy Greco and Deputy Rogers, and we have one more Deputy Stewart, who's not here today. And then Sergeant Joseph is our CID sergeant, so I just wanted you to meet her as well. So we'll have CID sometimes coming to represent for the meetings, too. These faces do change from time to time, but Katie, I'll let you know, you know, if it's going to be somebody different, if we replace the Jamestown car, things like that. So we'll try to make sure you guys know who's going to be presenting each time. So for... So we'll do it, like this month it'll be for March's stats. Next month it'll be April's stats. So we'll provide the deputy with those stats for each meeting. So for March, we had four shopliftings, and Jamestown is pretty low crime, right? But we have four shopliftings. Our food line and our Dollar General give us a little bit of headache, so we're working on ways to try to prevent that. We had two thefts of property from a residence, which were not burglaries, not break-ins, but somebody stealing something from someone's house. And then there were other various reports, like frauds, found properties, narcotic violations. Just so you know, your average response time is seven minutes, 33 seconds. We're working on that. We work to keep that low, just how quickly we respond to your calls. But the reaction time for you guys is four minutes and 11 seconds. So the reaction time is from when we get the call. So you got to think from when the caller... The response time, what we normally give you guys is from when the caller calls to when we arrive. The reaction time is from when we get notified that there's a call. So there'll be a little bit of a difference there. So think, three minutes it took for us to actually get dispatched to that call. So I'm explaining these things, they won't... So hopefully, they won't have to explain it next time they report it. And then we'll give little tips also, like making sure, because it is getting warm and everybody's in the park, make sure you're locking your doors and keeping your valuables out of your car. If you go for a walk in the park, probably just leave your stuff at home if you can. Don't take it. Don't put it in the car, because people do break in cars to get valuables. If you see something, of course, say something. And then there's also a fraud that's going on now where people are calling and saying that they're Guilford County Sheriff's Warrant Squad. So when people get those calls, Greensboro, Guilford County, no law enforcement is going to call you and ask you for anything, okay? We're not going to ask you for money. We're not going to ask you for stuff. So just make sure, if you question it, you can always call our office and talk to us, and we'll let you know what's legit, what's not. And then if you guys have any questions, you let us know.
Any questions?
Well, thank you, but I just wanted to say that we have been seeing you guys around more, and it's been great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to say the same thing.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, yeah, so it is noticeable that we... So thank you, guys!
You're working hard. And there are times when they might not, you know, they do have to go to calls like our food lines and our Dollar Generals to take these reports and things like that. But even when doing the reports, they try to make sure the neighborhoods are safe. We've had a speeding complaint, so we did put a speeding sign up on Dillon Road recently.
I saw that, yeah. That was good.
And I can't remember the gentleman's name, but one of our citizens, he'll call and let us know when the battery dies, because it does die periodically. But he lets us know, so if there's any complaints or anything that we can try to work on, we'll do it. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If y'all don't need anything else from me, we're going to leave. The Jamestown car that is supposed to be here will be here.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, do you want to tell us about Litter Sweep?
Well, I enjoy doing Litter Sweep on Saturday mornings. I would love for anyone to join me. It is always a joy to bring you a great report. What I think is so very exciting is that we have a satellite project going on. At the same time, we were on Main Street and around the central part of the town, our youth representative was having an event over at Ragsdale as well. So I think it's great that we're from one end of town to the other. The Civitans were on Scientific Street and did a huge project there. It's just amazing to me that 28 people can pick up 28 bags of trash, but it makes such an impression. So please know that I appreciate everyone that comes. I know that our town council wants to continue supporting Litter Sweep. DOT provides us with all of the supplies and the equipment that makes it very easy. I know that you and I even make a phone call to the DOT office on Monday morning, and it was picked up by Tuesday. So those are the kinds of things that I just think, everything is just working so well together. And I hope that y'all will continue wanting us to participate and coordinate together with those fall and spring events. And I have extra bags, extra equipment, extra gloves, anytime, after hours or on weekends. If anyone would like to do a special project, I can help them coordinate that. If your neighborhood, if your Girl Scout troops, if a women's circle, or some other group of people wants to take, you know, some time to do some team building, what better way than to help keep Jamestown beautiful? So thank you.
Thank you so much for what you do, Elizabeth. Scott, I want to hear about golf court leases.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's that time of the year, well, it's that time period when we have to start looking at our golf carts. We're currently in a four-year lease agreement with our existing provider that will end at the end of June. Traditionally, we have adhered to a four-year lease structure and traded out our fleet after three years. This approach has consistently ensured that our carts remain in good condition, minimizing downtime and avoiding costly battery replacements. However, with our current lease nearing its end, nearly half of our batteries are out of warranty and beginning to fail. We actually have three down as of today. Upon reviewing all options, I propose upgrading a new fleet of carts that includes a few new features that we don't have, such as lithium batteries, which in general, the industry's going that way. Some manufacturers don't even offer the traditional lead acid batteries. They will have built-in chargers on them for people's phones and speakers. And of course, we're adding sand bottles as well to help with the maintenance of the tea boxes. Even with these additional features, the new agreement would save the facility about $10,000 annually, and we'd be able to maintain a four-year term with the flexibility to trade at the end of the three-year mark, ensuring that our carts remain in excellent condition for our patrons. We had the opportunity to test the demo cart for almost a week and received overwhelmingly positive feedback from our staff and customers. Additionally, this proposal includes an option that enables us to receive new carts prior to the expiration of our existing agreement in June. I believe this proposal will provide significant long-term value to the facility and improve overall experience to our patrons and reduce maintenance costs. Like I said earlier, we have three down as of today that are all battery-related. I did... We did pull the hours off of them. Two of them are under warranty, and one of them, I don't think it's going to be under warranty. We'll try it, but I got a feeling it's not. But I do propose, after looking at several different, all the cart manufacturers, the major ones, Yamaha came in the cheapest by... I put on here $10,000. It was roughly around $8,500 a year, and then over the term of the four-year lease, that was a pretty significant savings. So we're super excited about it, and this cart's got a little bit more comfortable ride, wider seats, better suspension, so this is what we're looking to go to.
So really, the way we got that cost saving was shopping different vendors.
Yes, ma'am.
And actually... Able to secure a better price.
Yes, ma'am. When I start... This has been a process that's been going on about three months and going back and forth with the different manufacturers, and most of them have been easy to work with and been able to give me numbers quick. But just from the original cost estimate that we got, it was... It was like $100... They do it by a cart, and so my first one was $123.32 a month per cart per month. We've gotten that down to the Yamaha now, and that was for a five-year lease. And with the Yamahas, $121 a month, but that's for a four-year lease, so the terms... We'll get that trade in a little bit sooner and be able to keep our carts a lot fresher.
And this really... This is the proposal. This isn't the actual lease with all the lease terms.
Correct.
And if we move forward with this proposal, then you'll get the lease, or the attorney will draw the actual lease with terms and conditions on it.
By all means, yes. This is... Instead of having all the banks draw lease papers for three different vendors that have ready, we just ask for the proposal, and we'll move forward with that. But we'll definitely, excuse me, have Rob check it out.
Now, Scott, do you know if our neighboring golf courses, like in Greensboro or, you know, Ocala or whatever, do they have carts that are similar to what we would like to have?
It's pretty wild, because in our area, there's a lot of easy go in this particular area. You go a little bit east... You go a little bit east, and it's predominantly Yamaha. So, there's a, there's a, there's, you're starting to see more of a mix. Easy Go has had the run of this area for a long time. Yamaha and Club Car have both made a lot of headway over the past few years in this area, but you're starting to see Yamaha at some of the Greensboro courses now, a lot out towards the beach. So, we have talked to other golf courses that are using them in Winston-Salem, because we wanted to find out how the service was, and, because we were told that they don't have in-house service. Well, we found out they do. They have their own, they have about ten techs across the state, and there's usually a day or two maintenance time, you know, downtime, which is pretty good considering.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I was just only asking simply because, you know, these are nice carts, didn't wanna make it look like we just wanted some luxury type of a cart. And that's why I was saying, this is more comparable to other, you know, or nearby golf courses that probably have something, or similar, doesn't have to be exact, but I think that, you know, what I'm trying to say is something like this keeps us comparable to, you know, other golf courses, making it more of a pleasurable experience, being up to date and, and all of those things. And not only that, safety, because, you know, older anything is, it becomes a safety concern. So, having something new is, is putting, you know, is making us more safe, or, you know, making our golfer safer, so...
Yeah, and the biggest, the, the biggest reason for the increase between what we have now and what, what we'd be getting is the lithium ion technology that's in the batteries. That is the most significant increase. Now, with that said, you'll see, we'll see about a forty percent drop in the power build or cart barn, too, because they don't take as much to charge. So, we'll see a lot of savings there. I've spoken to a couple of directors that, you know, they tell me, all the salespeople tell me that, but I want, I want proof. And I have had a lot of people tell me that there's a lot of truth to it, that you'll see a significant drop. But as far as the looks of the cart, it's nothing flashy, it's, it's a little bit more comfortable. It's the new body style, which we were on the tail end of last time, so it's gonna look a lot different, but compared to what other courses have, it's pretty much the same.
Thanks.
I appreciate you finding savings again, and, you know, it, it sounds like, you know, a great opportunity for us, and this is the right time to move on, so thanks for looking around and bringing something good.
Would you like to put that on motion?
So, I would like to move to approve the contract.
A second.
Wait. And I will, and I will do it in a more proper way. I would like to make a motion to authorize the town manager, assistant town manager, finance director, and town attorney to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with Yamaha for the cost not to exceed those included within the proposal.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
And Matthew, would you go over the Senate bills?
Yes. I do want to say, I apologize to councilmen and to the public for being a little rattled earlier. It's disappointing to me, knowing how hard the staff works, that somebody would have such a bitter heart that they would point out a typographical error and belabor that. And our staff, like Scott, who just came up here, has saved the town a tremendous amount of money to find fault with that as well. So, apologies to everyone.
Thank you.
There are several bills before the legislature right now. There are, and I put a new resolution at your desk, there are several bills in the Senate and several bills in the House, and I'm going to give you a quick overview of those, because Jose wasn't able to be with us this evening. Most of these do deal with planning and zoning-related issues, attacks on authority to local planning and zoning authority, and municipal oversight of development within our jurisdictional boundaries. Senate Bill 314 seeks to eliminate ETJ, thereby reduces the ability of municipalities to effectively manage growth and provide for the well-being of our residents in the developing areas around us. Senate Bill 493 is almost identical. It also seeks to eliminate municipal ETJ. Senate Bill 493 seeks to eliminate or limit ETJ authority. You see a theme here. Senate Bill 495 would introduce provisions that would further constrain local government's capacity to implement zoning regulations that are tailored to our community. 497, Senate Bill 497, would create a new category identified as middle housing, it's a planning-related term, would require local municipalities to permit duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and townhome units in any single-family residential district without any public hearing and without any consideration of potential impacts on neighboring properties or property values. Senate Bill 499 would propose additional changes that could undermine local government's ability to enforce zoning ordinances, which are designed to reflect the specific character, character and preferences of their communities. And Senate Bill 688 proposes shifting from a legislative to a quasi-judicial public hearing process, which would severely limit citizens' ability to participate in planning and zoning decisions. Then we move over to the House side. House Bill 626 would allow multifamily dwellings in all residentially zoned districts and waive construction fees for low- and moderate-income housing. It would establish a minimum gross density of at least four units per acre across all residentially zoned districts, among a host of other things. Senate Bill 627 enacts laws which would regulate accessory dwelling units. Senate Bill 661 would further restrict municipal oversight of street standards and building inspection standards, and it would require municipality to accept any pedestrian facility which may be required by our development standards, our, our local ordinances. Senate Bill 765 is more comprehensive, and it would place a tremendous amount of burdens on local governments. We would be required to forecast any financial impacts of new legislation for a period of five years. So, any ordinance that we enact, we would enact, we would have to come up with a five-year report on what we think would happen from a financial standpoint. It also would strip municipalities of their authority to address any unique local needs and preferences through our own development regulations. So, we are asking for the council to send a resolution to our local Guilford delegation. I did, Jose did come up with a really nice contact information sheet, and that's also at the back table for anyone who wants one. It gives names, phone numbers, and email addresses of all of the Guilford delegation from the, both the Senate side and the House side. And it also stars, there's stars beside the ones that are specifically related to our jurisdiction, that represent Jamestown.
Could we have that information put on the website?
I can.
Thank you.
Certainly do that. We'll put that under the news and notices tab with some information on this resolution. Be all, end all, and Rob can correct me if I'm wrong, is that essentially, this has been a clear move by the legislature to take regulation away from the, the local jurisdictions and bring it to Raleigh. You know, I may not always agree with the council decision, I told Pam this earlier today, but I do believe that the voice of the community resides with our council, and it needs to remain there. So, I would ask for your support, and passing the resolution on, I will send it to our league lobbyists and Northern Ireland League of Municipalities, as well as our Guilford delegation, and so, any questions?
No, I was gonna say, I, I'm just appalled at these, these laws they're trying to pass in Raleigh. And there's been a trend for several years in doing this, just stripping away local government's authority to govern the town that our citizens elected us to do. And as you say, bring it up to Raleigh. Raleigh does it no best for what Jamestown needs. And I, I hope that citizens are outraged as well, and will, will email and call their legislators, their representative, and let them know. And I really, and I don't understand it either. I don't understand why, why they're wanting to take the authority. You know, I've, I've said, North Carolina, I looked it up sometimes, there's like four-hundred-and-twenty-three small towns under five thousand. Don't quote me on it, it could have been four ninety-seven, it was four hundred something. But what made North Carolina so special is each small town was crafted by the local elected officials and their citizens, and how they wanted that town to look. So, they're all different. And then you, when some of them go to our state, you go and check all of them out, and you go to what small town best suits you, other than a standardized, that is pretty much, it's like the state is gonna standardize what they have to look like, where things can go, and take away the voice of the people to have that. So, I, I, I think, please, please, call and be, and that's what you should be outraged about, in my opinion.
I do appreciate that, I do appreciate you asking to bring this off the consent agenda.
Yeah.
You know, we, we, we put things on the consent agenda that we think are non-controversial. This is not really controversial, but it does help to give the information out to the public.
Get the word out. Folks don't know what's happening in Raleigh, yeah.
Right. We, we discussed it at the planning board meeting last night. You know, one thing we didn't necessarily say, and as arduous the process as it was, and as long and difficult, as controversial as the rezoning was for D.R. Horton, the Johnson Farm, we did have the ability to do that because we had ETJ authority over that property. If we didn't have that, it would have developed in the county, and I can promise you, it would have affected Jamestown in a much different way, and we would not have been as able to, to influence that decision-making process. So, ETJ has been vitally important for us, especially here in a smaller town between two major cities. So, you know, we, we appreciate the fact that the legislature has not done anything with that, but it has been a constant attack on ETJ, for example.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd just like to add, Matthew, and we're council as well, it's just a statement, and, and we have said this before, and I just want to take the moment to reiterate for those who are here, as well as those who are watching, that council and staff are, you know, always open to assist our residents. If you have any questions or anything that you feel that you need clarification on, that we are always welcome to assist you. So, please feel free to reach out to us at any time, and, and staff, you know, Matthew, I mean, it's, it's really, you know, simple. I just want to make sure that people know that, you know, we're here to help in case they're, they're, you know, have misleading information. So, please reach out to us.
Absolutely.
I appreciate Martha bringing this out from the consent agenda as well. And, you know, one, one thing I really like about being on council in Jamestown is that we're able to just focus on the town. And so, things like this, you know, bother me, because also, it, I feel like it kind of forces us to take our eyes off of, you know, just focusing on the town, because now, oh, now we have to think about what's happening at the state level.
Defending the town.
You know, we, yeah, exactly. Obviously, we always want to stay aware, but, you know, and, and some of these things, some of these changes are right for some cities and some communities, and they should have the right to implement those. But to, you know, to Martha's point of looking at North Carolina as if we are just one ninety-five, four ninety-seven, four ninety-nine, six eighty-eight, and seven sixty-five.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Matthew, and moving on to your next item.
All right. It's sort of a fortunate rearranging of the, of the agenda, this is the next item.
Yes.
We are considering contracting with a lobbyist to help us closely monitor legislation, budget developments, regulatory changes that impact municipalities just like us. They can provide early warning about risks, opportunities, and other things that would allow the town to respond more swiftly and strategically. We, as you know, have been discussing renovation or replacement of Fire Station Forty-Six, which is the one that's located just behind Town Hall. It is owned by the town, and Pine Cross Sedgefield Fire Department operates the facility under our contract. The station is no longer capable of meeting the mission of the fire department. There are numerous challenges which hinder safety of the personnel that are stationed there. Replacement of facility is anticipated, as you can imagine, to be very costly, and it's our hope that a lobbying firm may help identify some financial opportunities at the state level through grants or other means which would benefit the citizens of Jamestown. Same goes with information on efforts for bills that impact us in a negative manner from regulatory standpoint. As the legislation moves through the General Assembly each session, the town feels that it would be beneficial to have a firm which is proactively monitoring and advocating for the town in Raleigh and/or Washington. Finally, the firm that we've selected, New Frame Incorporated, would be able to work directly with the town council each year. We talked about having them come in and craft, help craft a specific legislative agenda for each council, which would, they would, they would then use to strategically attack information that's coming out of the legislature, thus benefiting the citizens. The agreement is in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Well, I never thought that the town of Jamestown would have to have a lobbyist when I was starting work twenty, or thirty years ago, whatever. But I do believe in today's world, and the way things are happening, that, that we do need representation there. And of course, especially in the fire department, seeking funds for that, because you just, things happen so quickly, and, and we don't know what all's happening. The league keeps us, you know, up to date. But anyway, I, I do see where there's, there's a need for it these days. I just have one little thing, and I believe the attorney drew up this contract, and it's just an administrative thing under item number nine, independent contractor. We've got listed here that the Jamestown manager, Matthew Johnson, will be the primary principal point of contact for the lobbyist. Normally, we just list a position and not a person, because people come and go. Now, I'm not saying Matt, you're going anywhere.
No, I agree with you.
But I think we should just say the town manager of Jamestown is the point of contact. And then I don't know if, if it should be, and/or the mayor, if the mayor should also be included in that. That's, that's whatever y'all think, but I would just make that minor change.
I'm happy to put either out, I don't think any of those has too legal impact. Policy standpoint, I'm not sure that would break any council members, but if it did.
But the mayor is a spokesperson, I think that's perfectly fine.
I'm happy to remove my name and put town manager and, and/or mayor. It's fine with me. We can make those changes, I don't think they'll have any problem with that.
Would anyone have any further discussion about it?
I guess, just wanted to flesh out a little bit, since, since this is new, like you're saying, Martha, we never, we thought we would be in this position, but I think, you know, definitely with the Fire Station on the horizon, it's a real benefit. But, you know, we, in, in discussing this up to this point, Pine Cross Sedgefield, as they mentioned, I think Derek mentioned at the budget retreat, that they also have a lobbyist. And there was, you know, when we were looking at this, we were thinking, well, should we sign on the same firm or look for another one? And so, I think it was good that we ended up going with a different one. So, now, you know, our legislators will be hearing from multiple people about the specific project, so hopefully that will be helpful. And that this firm also has, represents firefighters and other first responders, and so seems, you know, better.
Oh, they do?
Boys to, you know, they, they know the, the friends and the people who may need a little more movement on this, anyway. So, just wanted to, to put that in, but...
I do want to clarify that they asked us what our legislative, you know, needs would be, Fire Station being the top one, but also bathrooms at Ren Miller Park did come up as a discussion item, so I don't want to leave that out. There are other, other needs in town, for sure.
Well, I agree with Councilwoman Martha and Rebecca, and I never thought that we would need anything like this, but I think we, I think it's a, a safe move, and strategically, especially as we get ready to grow a little bit more. And additionally, it's just not about grants, but it's also about the legislative and building relationship and economic strategic moves as well, so...
Do you have a motion, ladies?
Well, yeah, I would make a motion to approve the contract with New Frame Incorporated to secure funding for Pine Cross Sedgefield Fire Department facility improvements as presented, and allow the town manager, assistant town manager, and finance director to execute the contract, but with the amendment on item number nine, just to say the Jamestown town manager will be the primary principal point of contact.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Matthew. Rebecca, you're up next.
I've been working with Blue Stream Environmental to kind of address the stormwater repairs that are needed in residents on their property. And we've developed a, an assistance policy that would allow us for stormwater repairs that are ten thousand dollars or less. The town would pay seventy percent of that, and the resident would be responsible for forty percent of it. And, are you having questions about that? You all have a copy of the policy.
Would there be any ongoing responsibility on the part of the town?
No. No, that's included in the, in the policy. And we'll have an agreement that the homeowner signs too, that will go along with the policy, and it'll mirror the language that's in the stormwater drainage assistance policy that we have.
Well, yeah, when we did adopt the stormwater fee, the big thing we said, we want that fee, those monies to actually use for projects, not administrative or inspections, to actually see projects that improve the quality. So I'm, I'm glad to see that we've, we've come up with the policy, and eager to see some actual projects get done to improve some of the problems we've got.
I think Paul has a list of those.
Any other questions for Rebecca?
I don't, I would move to approve the stormwater policy as presented.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
And Faith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to make a request to set the public hearing date for the recommended budget and CIP for fiscal year 2526, for May the 27th, 2025, at the town council meeting that will be held at 6 o'clock here in the Civic Center.
I make a motion to set the public hearing date for the recommended budget and CIP, SIP for fiscal year 2526, for May 27, 2025, town council meeting here at 6 o'clock in the Civic Center.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Faith. Scott, you're back up again.
Good evening again. I just wanted, I know Rebecca touched on it just a little while ago about how we Parks and Rec Committee met and discussed new rates at the golf course. Over the years, we've seen a gradual lag in our pricing structure at the golf course. We implemented a modest increase to the certain rate, certain rates last year. Not all the rates were adjusted accordingly. In June of this year, the, the current golf cart lease will expire, and as the industry continues to evolve, all major manufacturers are shifting towards the lithium ion, like I discussed earlier. We're also looking at adding GPS to the golf carts, which would, if you look at our Yelp reviews and stuff like that, one of the biggest complaints is that we're, the pace of play. So adding GPS would really speed all that up. So we're just trying to plan ahead and adjust the rates accordingly. Some of the rates are, whoops, sorry. Some, basically the rates are, the, the riding rates are going to go up about $5, and the, and that's mainly due to the new carts. And the walking rates, and most of the other rates are going to be about $4. I know there was some talk about how we did away with the, the resident rate, and what we ended up doing there is we're trying to simplify our computer system, because we have about 20-some rates in our computer at the golf course. And our system's a little bit older, and you have to manually scroll through each one of them to get to the proper rate. So what we did is we got rid of all the resident rates in the system, but we added a 20% resident discount to, like a hot button. So they're still going to get their discount. It's just structured a little bit different now. That's, that's the biggest thing. So I know we had talked originally at the Parks and Rec meeting about offering a 15% resident discount, and I think Rebecca and we all discussed it then, that it would be better for our residents to have a 20% discount instead of the 15. So that's kind of what we had planned for and budgeted for.
What is the current rate, discount rate?
It, it's, it's different because of the way the fee structure is. It could be anywhere from, I think it was, I can't remember.
You had an average, didn't you?
I, well, it was kind, you know, I, I appreciate you wanting to simplify this.
It's super confusing.
And you know, some of it, it looks like, there was like a 22% discount, and then there was like a 37% for people who, you know, don't use a cart, which apparently is barely anyone. So, you know, you can really get a deal, but anywhere from, you know, 20 to 37%. I think this is nice, to simple.
And that, and we did not raise the resident rates at all last year when we did a, a rate increase, so those stayed, stayed low. Just to give you an example, at the proposed rate, with a 20%, our current rate, our, the proposed rate for a weekend riding would be $55, and with the 20% discount, you're looking at $44. So it's still a pretty significant discount, so. And I know there was some discussion about.
About maybe doing a little more than that for residents.
So are, are we discussing that now, or are we doing that next?
Well, this is to approve.
Okay. If it's okay to skip ahead, I, you know, we, we did talk about the discount. Again, I think it's great to simplify things as much as possible. I know we had also talked about how sometimes in the golf shop, it's difficult because people come in and they don't realize that just because their address is Jamestown doesn't mean that they would get the resident rate, because that's for taxpayers who are also paying for the golf course. So, you know, it sounds like one of the things with the new point-of-sale system, maybe that will come up, is that it, it'll be easier to keep track of who lives where, and that, you know, potentially with having this discount, that people could maybe beforehand, or if they call up or make a reservation, they can give their address, and you can kind of have them in the system, so it's not having to figure out, okay, what, what street is this, and what, what part of the street, and things like that. And we, as far as the rates go, because I, I did lobby for the 20, and then I was scaring people by saying, can we get it up to 30? How far can we get it up there for residents? But, you know, we talked a little before the meeting, and it sounds like we could do some resident-focused events, maybe quarterly throughout the year, that, because the real point is wanting to get more residents in, and get them comfortable there, and, and, you know, whether it's golfing or you see the facilities or, or things like that, and with the beautiful new park coming, that, that should be easy. But I'm, I'm more amenable to the flat 20%, provided that we do, you know, have those events, so.
Yeah, we, we'd get creative and figure out a way to showcase it, and the whole property, really, especially for our residents.
Any other discussion on this, that rate schedule?
And, and the new point-of-sale system that we're, we've been looking at, it would set up profiles. So once, once somebody's been in once, that have a profile, we wouldn't have to look them up again, and it'd be automatic, and really quick, so.
Do you have a motion?
If there's no more discussion, I would make a motion to approve the proposed golf rate changes that Jamestown Park and Golf Course has presented.
Do you want more discussion about this, or?
Did you have something to add?
No.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And Scott, do you have the quarterly report with you?
I do. You're still stuck with me.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Let me get my right one, so. I'm going to touch base on, real quick, on the, on the numbers from the, from the quarter, and then tie it in with some of the things that we've been doing out of the golf course. As far as, a few years ago, I think it was 2022, we did the, the study at the golf course through the National Golf Foundation. And a lot of the things that were mentioned in that, we've been addressing, and I just wanted to highlight that. But the, the first quarter in 2025 presented a mixed performance at the golf course compared to the same period in 2024, with notable improvements in March helping to close earlier gaps in revenue and participation. The revenue for quarter 1, 2025 reached $197,313, showing a slight decline from $199,610 in quarter 1 of 2024. While January and February saw decreased revenue year over year, March experienced a strong rebound, generating $130,697, which is an 18.5% increase over March 2024. So the driving range in food and beverage, the range revenue experienced a dip in January and February, but surged in March to over $9,000, surpassing the previous year by 26% for the same month. Similarly, the food and beverage sales were lower in the first two months, but saw growth in March with a total of just over $9,500, up 20% from 2020, March of 2024. The total rounds played for the quarter was 494,797, compared to 5,235 in quarter 1 of 2024. January and February showed decreased participation, and that's mainly, in January, it was so cold, we had the greens covered for 21 days.
That was what I was going to ask.
And we had a lot of cold weather, and we, unfortunately, we can't control Mother Nature. We'd make a lot more money if we could. But despite a slower start in January and February, the golf course demonstrated a strong recovery in March across all key areas. Revenue, range, food and beverage, and rounds played, the momentum gained at the end of the quarter sets a positive tone for the upcoming spring season.
Thank you. I'm going to call it on you one more time.
Well, I was just going to say, and maybe you can give this to later, we've got the revenue comparisons, but I like to see the expenditure comparisons.
Yes, ma'am, and.
So if you don't have that, we can give that to us later.
No, and our expenditures stay pretty consistent throughout the year. I mean, in the wintertime, in the colder months, we're not spending as much, because we're not mowing as much, and, and things like that. But we also do early order programs and take advantage of discounts from manufacturers to get our fertilizers and chemicals that we do in December. So, you know, I would say if you did it by quarter, it would stay pretty even throughout the year, but we can look into getting you some.
Yeah, yeah. Just to go along with this comparison from January to March of the, the revenues, just give us an expenditure too.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then just real quick, I know we were talking about, we've talked about golf carts and rates and all these different things going on, and the National Golf Operations did that study a few years ago, and they touched base on things that we need to be, be looking out for, like cart paths and trees, drainage, bunkers, irrigation repairs, clubhouse enhancements. And, you know, just to touch on the bunkers, we're working on a plan to file for a LWCF grant over the, over the next year or so, to combine a T and bunker project that would give us a big, it would, it's a much-needed project to, especially to redo the bunkers that's in the CIP now, but we're looking to combine projects, get some grant money, and do it cheaper. So drainage, we've worked on two different dams over the past two years, on 9 and 13, storm pipe going underneath 8. They've said something about the cart pass at Jamestown, they're in poor condition. Last year, we did a lot of, removed a lot of the bad cart paths and put new, and that's going to be a staged thing where we would do a little bit every year or so. And also, roots are causing those damaging trees. It said that, they also said we need to thin out trees. Well, last winter, we spent the winter, all winter, going through and pruning and limbing up trees, so areas will get more sunlight. The conditions of the course, condition of on-course services like restroom, shelters, functioning water fountains, we've got the new restrooms, we got fountains and water bottles. The irrigation system needed work. We've worked on updating that as well. We've put in, we, we started with the heart of it. We hadn't addressed the leaks. We're fixing those as needed, but we did go in and start redoing our pumps and motors and getting all the heart of it back to operating at 100%. So, and there's, there's a few other things on here. The, the POS system, our rates were mentioned, and to come up with a way to, to increase our rates. So I just wanted to let you all know that all these things, a lot of the things we talked about tonight were in that plan, and, and that we have been working on. So, and I appreciate Rebecca pointing out that she's the one brought it up and said, you know what, it sounds like a lot of this has been done. And I was like, man, that's a great, great idea, great points.
I love good plan follow-up. That's always, that's always the best. Because I think, you know, we do the plan, and you're, you're implementing it, but, you know, I think we, we talked a lot about it, and we appropriated the money, and they came, and they interviewed folks and did surveys and things, and so it's nice to always hear follow-up, too, when.
Yes, exactly. It's, you know, when you pay for a study like that, or a plan like that, and then say it sits on a shelf, that's, you know, that's, that's what's sad. But when you actually, you're, you're working it, and you're checking off the things that were recommended by experts, that is great.
Yeah, and like I said, it's a work in progress, and it's, it's been a few years, but we're making a lot of headway, I feel like, so. And thanks for the support, too.
I got one more item for you, Scott.
Got one more, huh?
The GPS lease agreement for the carts.
So the GPS something, is something, another thing on the, on the report was the adding technology. And so with the GPS, that would be part of our, eventually part of the P, the POS system. The POS would integrate with the T sheet, and somebody can make a reservation, and it'll be in our system, and it'll automatically assign a person to a cart. As y'all know, we've had a couple carts last year get damaged due to just negligence. And this will keep track of who's in the cart. It'll tell us where they went, and they can say, I didn't do that. And we can say, well, yeah, you did. We can pull it up. We'll be able to set geo fences in areas where they shouldn't be going and getting carts stuck, but they continue to do so. So it'll speed up the pace of play. If somebody's falling behind, then they'll, we can send a message from the pro shop to come up on their screen, and it'll tell them, hey, you need to speed up.
Okay.
And if we have to, you know, it'll be a nice message.
Big brother watching you. I'm serious.
It's a little big brother.
All of the rules are else. Hurry up.
You know, you get a second warning, then, and then it'll say, all right, it's time to skip a hole, or. So it, it'll be good from the aspect of keeping our carts in good shape. It'll be good for maintenance and keeping the golf course in better condition, because they won't be tearing up areas. If it rains and we need to put carts on path, it's the flip of a button, and then our click of a button. And as they try to go off the path, it's going to warn them. It's going to say, no, carts are on path. And then if they keep going, it's going to slow them down to almost a stop, and the only way they can get out is to reverse it. So it speeds up play, it's better for the course, and, and be a lot, a lot easier on the pro shop keeping up with people as well.
Again, it looks like a, a feature that most of the golf court courses use, from, my information that I've.
You're, you're seeing more and more at every course.
Seeing where it's becoming more.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
There's, you know, Grandover over here has had it for years.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's.
The municipal course in Winston-Salem's got it, Indian Valley, the Burlington course has got it. So it's, that, that's another one that's moving that way to speed, because mainly for the pace of play, when golfers come out there and they have their range finders, they got to drive up, and they got to get their yardage correct, and so it just takes time. Now they'll be able to drive up, it'll be on their screen, and get the right club and go.
Well, of course, my, yeah, my only concern was the cost. You know, again, adding cost, but it looks like from the explanation is the adjustments in the rate are going to cover the cost of, of adding this.
Yes, ma'am. The, when you, when you do the math and break it down, it, it comes down to about a dollar a round.
And so, so that was already accounted for in the rate change?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So, I think it's great, you know. I think, you know, to, certainly as Pam is saying, you know, wanting us to stay with, on the same level as other places.
Yeah.
I want us to be a little better than those other places, so.
I want to be a little ahead of everybody, what I'd rather.
I'm fine with that, and if, if we have already, you know, appropriated the money for that, or, or raised the rates in order to, you know, make that happen.
Well, my thing is, I just didn't want to price yourself out of the market. I don't want us to be the most expensive.
Right.
In the area of a municipal course, but.
And we've looked at other rates accordingly.
Yeah.
Having done some golf course maintenance in another life, I like that part about keeping them on the path.
Yeah.
That's big.
It's huge. It, it really is.
Do you have a motion, counsel?
I would make a motion to authorize the town manager, assistant town manager, finance director, and town attorney to negotiate and execute a subscription agreement with Tag Marshall GPS for the cost not to exceed those included within the proposal.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Scott. You can sit down now.
Thank you. Y'all done with me for the night.
Katie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Nobody signed up.
Any other business, counsel?
Well, I would just like to say Happy Municipal Clerks Week to our municipal clerk, and thank you for all you do for me, for the council, and for the town of Jamestown.
Uh-huh.
And I, I know how hard the job is, and I certainly appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Any other business?
Motion, George Arn?
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.